Good evening. Welcome to the annual organization meeting of the Greenberg Central School District. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, the rich and sound, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please pardon my back. Please pardon my back. Ms. Glazer, Ms. Mares, may you please stand? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and to faithfully discharge your duties of trustee for the Greenberg Central School District? Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is election of the President for the 1718 school year. Before I take nominations for the office of President, I just want to ask board members to raise your hands so that I can call upon you, since I'm also taking the minutes of this meeting. In the event that a candidate is unopposed, Roberts Rules of Order states that an election is not required. With that said, the floor is now open for nominations. Mr. Newland.
I nominate David for President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Going once, going twice, there being no other nominations, the floor is now closed, and Mr. Warner is the President for the 1718 school year.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the Vice President. The floor is now open for nominations. Do I hear a nomination?
I would like to nominate Claudia Glazer.
Do I hear a second? Are there further nominations?
I would like to nominate Antoinette for Vice President.
I second.
Are there any further nominations? There being no further nominations, nominations for the office of Vice President are now Please note, a Vice President is elected when there's a majority vote in favor of a candidate. When I call upon you, please state the name of the person for whom you will cast your vote. Ms. Mares. Please name the person for whom you want to cast your vote.
I'm sorry, for the Vice President?
For the Vice President.
Antoinette Darden-Sentron.
Mr. Newland.
Antoinette Darden-Sentron.
Mr. Warner, that's me, Antoinette Darden-Sentron. Mr. Williams. Ms. Glazer.
Antoinette.
Mr. Bitterman.
Antoinette.
Ms. Darden-Sentron.
Antoinette.
Yes. I believe Antoinette has received a majority vote. Ivy, would you...hello?
It's shut off.
Yeah. Okay. Ivy, would you like to administer the oath of office to the Vice President? Or is that my job?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Should I...should I administer the oath of office to the Vice President?
You can.
Antoinette, please rise. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Vice President of the Greenberg Central School District?
Yes.
Annual Appointments. Do I hear a motion to approve the annual appointment items presented to the Board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Authorizations. Do I hear a motion to approve the authorization items presented to the Board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Designations. Do I hear a motion to approve the designation items presented to the Board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Determinations. Do I hear a motion to approve the determination items presented to the Board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And now, we do some scrolling. All right, now we're moving on to our regular meeting. At this point, we're going to open a public hearing for the Repair Reserve Fund. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing to consider appropriating repair reserve funds as outlined this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing is now open. Go ahead, Dr. Chase.
Good evening, community members...pardon me, good evening, members of the school Board. Congratulations, Mr. Warner. Congratulations, Ms. Antoinette Darden-Sentron, and welcome to the newly sworn-in Board Members, and welcome back, Ms. Glazer. Community members, this evening, we will present to you the final phase of our Repair Reserve Fund. On May 17th of last year, the community voted favorably, in fact, at a 73 percent margin, to approve the $700,000 repair reserve. As part of the process to get the work undergoing, we will need to open a hearing with the public, allowing you to hear once again how that money will be spent, once again, in addition to allow you to ask questions as appropriate. So, at this point, I'm going to pass the baton over to our Director of Facilities, Mr. Michael Falcone, who will share with you in detail how the $700,000 will be spent.
Good evening, everyone. Repair Reserve Fund, you approved of it in April 5th, 2016, and it was a separate proposition for the voters to establish fund repairs reserved in the amount of 700,000. We passed by 73 percent, which I thank you very much. Woodlands High School, we all know was built in 1961. We have stair treads that are...the lips are busting out on them, that's causing a tripping hazard throughout the school. They need a replace...you know, to replace. It, you know, creates a tripping hazard. The small gym floor, we have termite damage in the floor. We've tried repairing it. The sleepers are all rotted away. It must be replaced. At the same time that we do the gym, we're going to be doing the wall pads. I know several years ago, they bought wall pads, but they only bought them for two sides of the gym. Technically, you need the wall pads all around it. If you do one, you might as well do the second one to bring it up to code. Like I said, above, these are the original gym floor and also the stair treads that are there. We have RJ Bailey. We have an elevator, it was installed in 2002. My understanding is that they've been having problems with it for the past 10 years, eight, 10 years. We want to try to...we want to repair it so we can transport our students a little quicker. It slows down, and that's been an ongoing problem. We have a condensation tank, that's an original condensation tank, that we patched up because last year, it started leaking, and that is in need to be replaced. Highview School, built in 1955, the gym floors are VCT tiles, basically what you see over here. They have painted stripes that are on the floor. Some of the tiles are starting to come up. I would like to replace...we're going to be replacing that gym, that gym floor. We really can't sanitize that floor because whenever you sanitize or strip that floor up, the lines start coming up. But then again, the VC tiles are starting to loosen and wear, so we'd like to replace that whole floor there. The PA system, it's obsolete. It's the same age as the building. We have some dead zones, safety feature, you know, that's a safety factor at Highview School. The exterior stairs, the stairs, the metal stairs that go down towards the field, they...we've been trying to repair them, they're rusted out, that is in need to, you know, to be replaced. Total cost is about $167,000. Ella Jackson, that building was built in 1959, see original alarm, fire alarm panels. We're starting to get a lot of trouble signals, exactly what happened here at this building. We're going to be replacing the alarm panel, we're hoping that that'll solve the issues that are in that building. The parking lot, if you noticed, it was more like Bailey School parking lot, had a lot of spider veins, what they call, in the blacktop. We want to go ahead and repave all of that. Estimate cost is about $133,000. The Mansion, built in 1907, I just couldn't find a date that they put the fire alarm system in that building, but it's obsolete, okay? There's no smoke detectors, it needs to be upgraded. I've been told this for the past couple of years by the...to the fire department, that's in here, that's a total cost of about $80,000. Okay? The Repair Reserve Fund is $700,000, the proposed project's about $654,000. We do have remaining $45,000, but these are preliminary costs that we have them, so what happens is that some of them could be a little higher, some could be a little bit lower, so we need a little room to keep on the side. Any comments? Yes.
The floor at Highview, is that going to be a wooden floor, or are you just going to replace it with a certain type of level?
Okay, that's going to be...over at Ella Jackson, there's a floor, it's a little cushion, okay? It's...they're putting it in colleges, they're putting it around, so they say it has the same bounce as a wooden floor. That one I will replace with that type of material. It's a little easier on the little kids. As far as the high school, I would like to have a discussion with the principal, whether that's going to go back as a wooden floor, or it might do the same type of material.
Do I not see one of the gym or the stairway kids...is there paint...did I see paint on there? Are you going to paint that gym?
Paint is not on there, but we are going to paint that gym. It's...you probably only have to paint from about seven feet up. The reason why is because all the walls are going to be covered with pads.
Okay, now, my concern is the fact that I'm hoping that that does not be one of the projects that will be...the money will kind of like dissipate. In other words, if you have something else to do, you take money from that gym, and by your own, I'm hoping that when we can allocate the activity, we will use to fix up that gym for the special needs.
Mr. Falcone will take that one. Thank you. Ms. Carey, you voted for the money to be used in a certain way, and so we have an obligation to adhere to what we put out to the community. So, if we have allocated...excuse me, one second, for the high school, I forgot the exact amount, for the high school, then what we specify that we will use the money for is exactly what we will use the money. So, the $184,000, even if something else does come up, because it's already Board-approved, it's already approved, it will be approved through SED, I have to follow exactly what is stated here.
Okay, all right. Second question, I don't see anything allocated for the Bureau of Children's Program, and I know there must be something down there, or down here, or down at the Maidenhead or the Main Building that needs some repair. So, has that been looked into? Has there been any kind of...
When this was being talked about, I met with all the principals of all the buildings, told them, you know, if there are any special projects that you want done to be in a Repair Reserve Fund. At that present time, there was nothing.
So, you...I go in there and look to check where it's short, but sometimes, we don't, especially women, don't see the need as much as you do are trying to see the need. So, my concern is, do you go and look to see if there's anything that you need to fix down there?
I look at every building.
Because it's bad, you know, the...
I look at every building. There was a bathroom that was redone there three years ago, okay? I look at every building, and I assess it, and I talk to the person that's in charge, the principal, the directors, and then we go from there, okay? They have to prioritize what they would like in their building.
In addition, Ms. Carey? Hi. In addition, the mansion is where we also house our ECP program. We have AM and PM, and we have a slide that speaks to the mansion, so whatever the benefits of the mansion itself, it also benefits some of our ECP students who are housed there as well, which we talked about, the fire alarms, which were out of compliance, which is a safety issue, and so that will be addressed at the mansion.
Okay, I spoke at the last meeting in reference to the PC and playground, the playground structure. I don't see anything allocated to fix the playground structure out here, so what is Mary's going to do after me?
She is...she had to step away to take care of something on an emergency basis, and she does have a report for you, so we do have that. But in the meantime, when this repair reserve was actually put together and it was structured, we didn't have that police tape, and that's what we put out to the community, what we were going to do. That happened afterwards, and Mary is working with the building principal in terms of reallocating her 1718 budget to ensure that the proper repairs are made and that there are priorities given to some things that need to be repaired over others.
Okay, so we can look forward in September, seeing that the structure fixes and the safety needs reinstalled at the children's center.
We are in the process of working with the building administrator to help her to reprioritize some of the needs and making the playground a priority. So, we're helping her to reallocate her funds to ensure that we move forward with fixing the playground.
Okay, I'm saying that before, I wasn't going to mention this, but I walked on by to the playground, and I stopped purposely. There were several parents out there with their children. They were playing on that structure. I wanted to go and tell them not to play on the structure, but I felt that it was not my business, and I wasn't ready to get any confrontation with the parents and the children. So, that's another thing that I'm concerned about, parents who's out there willingly letting their children run and play on, we have to ask.
I appreciate that, and you're right, and you would think that someone sees the caution sign, and they would not, but I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. Are there any further questions, Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that the monies that were...that we have received from the budget is...certain aspect of it is already allocated to these programs, but I didn't...is there anything, or is there any plans on addressing the ground issues at Bailey in regards to the ducks that are all over the grounds with the feces all over the area where kids are playing and kids are running around there? The playground is...needs coverage on the ground. You've got landscaping that's really not...but there's areas that are not...that does not have any grass on it. And the same thing for Highview, we just came from there, and there's an area that's just blacktop, where the kids go back and forth between playing on that area and going to the other area where there's no grass at all, and it's really dirty that these kids are...kids are running into. I mean, are there any plans for the district as a whole to look at the playgrounds for the younger kids to figure out how to address these concerns?
As far as the playgrounds, the surface area, they are...we add playground, what do they call mulch, to it every year, so it keeps it what they call an impact test. That's tested every single year, and we do put playground mulch down every single year. So, that surface there is up to code. You mentioned grass. Grass, you know, if you have a sprinkler system, you can get grass to grow just about anywhere. But you have areas that, you know, stays dry for many, many, many weeks at a time, unless you have a good established lawn. That's very costly, you know, very costly to try to get grass grown in those two areas that you're talking about.
So, there are no plans against this costly, but there are any plans in terms to upgrade?
We have to prioritize what need in every building, what is first, second, third, okay? And that's up to the building principal to prioritize what they would like, first, second, or third.
What about the ducks that are in the area?
The ducks? You're talking about the geese that are in the area. We need to put in place, which I mentioned, okay? Everybody has to help out. You have...honestly, I've had a contractor in here with a dog, it's very costly. Says you could do the same thing if you just start chasing them off, chasing them away. The high school here, we've cut down, we're probably half of the geese that it used to be, but you know what? We do have the security guards and, you know, and the cabotas that are driving around, my staff drives around. Ella Jackson had a tremendous amount. Their staff is really on top of them, on trying to move them away. It's a little harder to move away at Bailey School because it's a closer area, and not only that, but they do have a pond right behind there. I know, I chase them away. The more you chase them, the less likely they're going to come back, and that is given by a professional that's told, you know, to me, that we put in place here at the high school, in Ella Jackson, and they're working there, okay? Bailey School, we just have to put in place, and I'm working with the principal and the administration over there, my staff as well, okay? It's a little harder because they have that pond right behind there.
Do you want to talk about the area in which the geese are playing?
Right. I understand.
Someone mentioned...
I think, but you know what, before...I believe it was a hand first.
Yeah.
Okay, I would agree in terms of the geese, and as much as we try to push them away, not the easiest thing to do, you're focused on children, so that is definitely a concern. But my other question, in terms of the process about wanting to bring up, you know, future repairs for the buildings and tapping into community members in terms of what that will be, I understand, I respect that process, but as a community member, when, what is that process, and when would be the ideal time to bring suggestions in terms of what we could potentially look at in terms of repairing the building to and for in 2018, 2019?
Sure. So, just to go back to this process, we started this process back in 2015, where we've made several presentations about it, and we've talked about it, and we showed pictures of where our issues are and so forth and so on. Moving forward, each principal, during their principal's like coffees and their teas and when they have their meetings, you know, as community members, if you bring those issues to the school principal, principal then, when he or she meets with Ms. O'Neal to go over the next year's budget, they actually make that then their priority, so that we will know what are the priority areas, you know, in each given building. So, basically, just voicing your opinion to the principal, letting the principal know what those concerns are, I am more than certain that each principal knows what his or her concerns are within their buildings, but just having that shared conversation so that we can have a list based on what those priorities are in each building and we can budget appropriately for the following year, okay? I believe this...did I answer your question?
Well, I think I would feel like we are being trapped too, and hopefully, the community is behind what we're doing, which is, I think the district is moving in a fabulous direction. I really do, I'm really pleased, as a teacher and as a parent, I like the direction we're moving in. So, I'm hoping at some point, we can vote on, I forget what it's referred to exactly, we can vote to do something in addition to the budget, the regular budget, to make the necessary...
You want a bond. You're talking about a bond?
Yes.
You're talking about a bond?
Yes, to make the necessary repairs, because we can't keep putting bad days on everything.
Sure.
And teachers are working hard, administration's working hard, the superintendent is working hard, we need to do our...
The parents are working hard.
The parents, of course, that's a given, that's, of course. So, with that said, you know, I hope that's something we're considering moving forward because it needs to happen.
It's definitely in consideration, and, you know, before we move forward with anything, we'll definitely enlist the community and we'll have more robust conversations. So, thank you for bringing that up, because it has been the topic of conversation with the school board, and that's a priority, FYI.
I've seen a grant writer hired, I don't know if it was last year or this year, would that be someone you can use for a playground situation for the schools that need that, or what is she doing, what kind of grants?
So funny you should ask. She actually applied for a grant for a playground, I believe, I don't remember which school. Unfortunately, we didn't get it. I've asked her to look for other grants for playgrounds, and that was about maybe two or three weeks ago, I've asked her to take a look at that, so she is in the process of doing that. And just so that you know, our grant writer has brought in over a half million dollars worth of grants in one year already for just different initiatives, and she continues to write and go after grants for our school district, but that is definitely on her list of priorities. Thank you for your questions. Are there any other questions?
Do you know where the repairs are?
That's all on State Education Department. We still need their approval. It's been up there for a while now, and once they approve of it, then we're going to start the process.
As far as we're going to do the school, we have a...we have to get approved, what the schedule is, like, is it that that...
Once it's approved, we need to get actual prices. We have to go out to bid. Once we go to bid, get the prices in, then we'll schedule it at the convenience of the building. If there's one of them, you know, for example, over at Highview School, that can be done during the school year, okay? So, that'll be one of the projects that can be done right off the bat. The high school, the middle school, they said they can work with us if they had to close one gym down, you know, it depends on the architects and the contractors. If it doesn't disturb the kids, we'll try tackling that, okay? But it all depends on the building and the principal, the staff as well.
One last question.
Sure.
Did you set up an additional $45,000?
It's not that, it's an additional $45,000. This is what we allocated, these are the costs that are estimated by the architect, but whenever you go out to bid, yes, you can probably, you know, maybe there's a project that might be a little bit more than $80,000, or might be a little less than $80,000, okay? You can't just allocate every penny of it, and then all of a sudden, you need extra money, a project's not going to be getting...the project's not going to be done.
Is there additional money that I left, some of the project hasn't been actually allocated or allocated? What happens if that's...
That'll be discussed with the administration.
With the school board, and that's something that we would have to vote to use it differently, and then we would have to get SED approval all over again. My guesstimate is that I probably will not have anything left over, because once we begin to uncover and start stripping and start removing, there are going to be other costs associated, and I think $45,000 as an overhead doesn't really give us a lot of wiggle room, once you begin to, you know, put it all together. And I just want to underscore something else Mr. Falcone indicated, and I think you've asked the question, when it all... Mr. Falcone indicated and I think you've asked the question. When at all possible, we will try not to disturb the children as we're making these repairs. Um, we will try our very best not to disturb the children. So I just want to make sure that that is put out there publicly. You know, it's, it's not our goal to interrupt instruction, um, to remove kids. Um, but whenever possible, you know, we will try to work around children in the educational process. Are there any other questions or comments? I heard Chase.
Chase, is it, is it, um, correct to say that the, uh, repairs to the gym, about that's my name, gym, uh, at Woodland, the little gym, not near the baby, uh, next year? When I say next year, I don't mean next school year, I mean next real date, like, uh, twenty seventeen, uh, twenty eighteen?
To be honest with you, I can't necessarily say that. Here's why. Once we have this hearing tonight, we then now contact the state to let them know that we have adhered this aspect of this process. This is the final process. We now have to wait for their approval. I can't do anything, Ms. Carey, until they approve this. Take a look at when you all voted. You voted in May of twenty sixteen. Look at where we are today, July eleventh, twenty seventeen. So it is with hope that this will be approved quickly. And although Mary had to leave, um, for an emergency purpose, she has been working very closely with our, uh, state education department and with our new architects to try to expedite this process so that we can get this underway. Um, so in terms of, once the approval happens, Mr. Falcone, once the approval happens, how soon do you believe we can actually get started with the gym per se?
The gym? Uh, I, I, I can, we can jump on it right away. We're going to go ahead and put it out to bid. The architects are, are, are ready and raring to, to get the bids out there and to get the, the prices on the floors. Okay. Um, they already wrote up the plans. We don't have to wor- worry about plans because that's already a step, you know, done at SED. Once the plans are approved, it's putting it out. So we can put it out right away. We, the, the board releases the money and we can go ahead and go forward. I don't think anybody is anxious as I am to get this thing going. So you, the money's released, SED comes back and I want to start.
Any further questions? Mr. Warner, we are done. I'd like to thank Mr. Falcone.
Thank you.
Did a fantastic job.
Appreciate it.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on the repair reserve fund projects?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Hearing is now closed. Statements from the public. Ivy, do we have any statements from the public? Our first and only speaker is Ms. Cora Carey.
First of all, just to congratulate all of the, uh, people who have been nominated and renominated and the president and the vice president and all that. I, I'm hoping that this year will be a better year. And I just want to tell you something. I watch you all on TV sometime. Your body language is, is weird. I sit there and crank up sometime looking at you guys and I say to myself, it's, it's like a comedy. I just want you to know, it's like a comedy thing. When I'm feeling bad, I just turn on your, you or the town board, uh, either one of the two. They're, they're just comedy central. Uh, but I just want to say that I'm hoping that, uh, the year coming up will be a good year for our students and for our staff and for the board, uh, that things will work out so that, uh, we have our children number one on our agenda. Uh, that's the important thing. And, um, I'm going to stay in your face about our special ed kids because they're very important to me. And, uh, having a special ed great grandson and seeing the, the joy that he brings, um, I, I want to make sure his education is the best and in doing so, making all of the special ed children's education the very best that it can be. So I wish you all a happy son and I pray all will be well with you and your families and, uh, we will see you again in September or whenever the need arises. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. The next item on the agenda is policy presentation. We have three policy amendments and one new policy to be considered for board adoption at the September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting concerning budget adoption, reserve funds, financial accountability and Title I parent and family engagement. Copies of these policies are available in the district clerk's office. They're also on the back table. They're also available in the school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning this policy should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. Moving on to approvals. Do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Non-instructional personnel items. Do I hear a motion to approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Business items. Do I hear a motion to approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student services items. Do I hear a motion to approve the student services items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
New business. Does any board member have any new business? Trustee Williams?
So, uh, David, at our retreat, as you know, we had a discussion about adding, um, about the process for adding new board members to committees. And, uh, myself, Ms. Glazer and Ms. Darden Central and Dr. Chase, uh, looked at some policies, uh, and we're currently working on a broad policy, uh, that, that discusses that. But per the particular item, this is one thing that we thought would resolve the situation. And this is of course pending legal approval, our legal team. So we have limited committees to three people, three board members, so as, so as not to, uh, form a quorum. But in the research that Antoinette, uh, provided, we noticed that there were some school boards that, uh, number one, had their meetings, their, their committee meetings in public. And number two, specifically said in the policy that the meeting, that the, the committee is advisory only and not legislative. So the only legislation that occurs obviously is among the full board. So what we're proposing and, and, uh, my colleagues, you tell me if, if you agree, because this is the last email exchange that we had. We're proposing that committees be limited, be capped at four members, four members or less. It can be three. It can be as little as two, but no more than four, that all meetings, all committee meetings be publicly announced. And that the policy strictly states that the committee's role is advisory. We've always operated under the assumption that it was advisory, but we will say it explicitly now. And in that way, we're able to have four members on a subcommittee, uh, on a committee. And then also, um, without, without, uh, we'll, we'll have four members, the meeting will be public and, um, but it will be advisory instead of legislative. So, uh, assuming that the board agrees with that, we would just ask if you would get, um, uh, run that by the attorneys, number one. And then number two, we will present a broader policy, written policy draft that includes that and a few other things.
Wonderful. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll say a couple, I'll, I'll give you a couple of comments and then I'll ask further comments from the board. Uh, all right. So the first thing I'm thinking is then is that all the meetings, uh, you're not going to do conference calls anymore for these particular meetings or for these particular committees?
Well, it's, it's, that's a good question. Um, the state law now allows, permits conference calls for public meetings. So we could indeed do that. Whether or not we will, uh, I, I don't know yet, but as part of the broader policy that we will be delivering to you, we will address that. So, uh, if, we can do a conference call so long as we put out publicly the conference call information for anyone who's interested.
And I would assume that these rules only apply to a board, uh, committee that has four or more, has four members on it?
No. I, I think, and again, we'd have to check this with the attorney, but all, all, uh, committee meetings would then be public.
Noticed.
Right. Publicly noticed. And, you know, and then people could attend or either physically or via conference call line if we did it that way, if that committee did it that way.
All right. Other questions from the board?
Yes, David. Uh, if we're going to announce the, uh, meeting publicly, Ivy, uh, do we, does this, uh, Ivy, does this rule comes under, uh, we have seven days to, if we're going to, we have to, right.
Three days.
The, the law requires that meetings have to be, uh, publicly noticed. That means it has to be sent to the newspapers, put on your website, um, at least three days in advance.
And the reason why I bring that up is that might constrain us or restrain us somewhat, you know, in having, uh, regular scheduled meeting unless we do just ahead of time. Okay? It, it, that's a good point, Ms. Miller. And, um, that's something we probably should have been doing all along, number one. But number two, that'll be in the draft and certainly when we present the draft, the full draft, we can, we can talk about that some more and, and, um, and refine that. But short answer is we probably should have been doing that all along. Okay.
Eric?
Thank you. Uh, can you tell? It doesn't matter. Um, Mr. Warner, um, thank you for, um, taking my question. Because we are now going to announce our meetings and have four board members, does that, in fact, which I think is wonderful, I, it makes it easier in fact for other board members to come and sit in on these meetings. Whereas in the past, we would feel that we could not attend because of the concern about meeting quarums and, and fully announcing. Because they're announced, that sort of makes it easier so that we can even be better informed, being able to attend, even if we're attending just as community members, um, more meetings. Is that true? Is that, is that your thought as well?
Oh, yeah. You said, Mr. Warner.
I know. Thank you for the question. I wanted to thank Mr. Williams for suggestions.
The short answer is yes. Yes. Um, and again, in the lit, in the literature that, that, uh, Antoinette provided, um, some boards, some, some committees, some committees, I should say, uh, it, it, they do allow for the board members to, in essence, be in the audience and participate in that capacity. And, and, and it's not an issue because the committee is advisory instead of legislative. So no, no, uh, nothing will be passed. Nothing, everything that they do will be a recommendation to the, to the full board.
Mr. Williams, I have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Warner.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Williams, would this apply to both board committees and district committees?
This is only for board committees.
Okay. Thank you.
When this comes up, will the public have a chance to, um, see on it or give any, um, suggestions, uh, this, uh, uh?
The short answer is I'm not sure. Um, the board obviously will take a look at it first. That, obviously your question is duly noted and we will take it under consideration.
Will it be on the agenda?
Oh, sure. It'll be on the agenda. Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Other new business?
Uh, yeah. David, I'd just like to make a statement. Uh, I would like to, uh, congratulate and welcome Tracy, our newest and youngest board member. And I would also like to thank, uh, Claudia and welcome her back on the board as newly elected. And I just wanted to thank her for the job that she's done. Uh, we appreciate it. And congratulations to David again as being our president.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Other new business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
We are adjourned.